Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Malden School Committee meeting. Today is Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, February sixth, at six P. M. here in the Council Chamber. It should be noted at that meeting Senator Jason Lewis will be here to talk about where we are regarding Chapter Seventy. So what we're going to do first is we're going to pledge allegiance to our flag. We'll then have a moment of silence for all those who have served our country. Our clerk will then call the roll to ensure that we have a sufficient number of members here to conduct business. And then we will get into this evening's agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes, followed by public comment. Then we'll hear from our superintendent as to what's going on in the district. We will then take up one motion and resolution regarding the superintendent's evaluation. Then we'll take up points of personal privilege, and then we will entertain a motion to go into executive session for five purposes. One is to approve the executive session minutes from December fifth. The second one is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, most notable the supervisor of attendance, Mr. Parsland, because an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The third item is to do the same thing with non-union personnel, specifically the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Ms. McDonald. The fourth will be the same, except that will be the Assistant Superintendent of Diversity, Equity, and Engagement, Ms. Doherty. And then finally, we will meet to discuss negotiations with S E I U Local Eight-eight-eight Clerical Unit. And then depending on what happens in that, we may come back out and act on some of those items, and regardless, we will then move adjournment. So one change, if there be no objection from the members, once we take the roll call and vote on the minutes, we will then take out of order the Faces of Recovery, and followed by the Malden High School Health Center. Then we will go back to the regular part of our agenda, which would be public comment on down. Is there any objection? Chair has none. So why don't we first, as always, pledge allegiance to our flag? Please rise if you are able to do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so today. Thank you. We'll now have our clerk call the roll. Here.
Mr. Drummy?
Yeah.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah.
Ms. Batafora?
Yeah.
Ms. Macklin?
Here.
Mr. Welldie?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Ms. Rose Zibert?
Here.
Superintendent Noriega Murphy?
Here.
Student Representative Hakawi?
Here.
So we do have a sufficient number of members that allows us to conduct business. Why don't we, before taking up the first item, get to our translation services for this evening? For that, we'll go to Mr. Welldie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as usual, we have our friends from Fox Translation here with us. Thank you for being our interpreters. For anybody who would like to access the language interpretation channels from home, just use the icon at the bottom of your Zoom. And I am gonna go ahead and activate our channels now.
We should be good. Very good. Thank you. And again, just to remind everyone, if you can speak slowly as we allow our translators to translate tonight's meeting. So with that, we'll go to our superintendent to introduce the first two topics.
Absolutely. Good evening and Happy New Year. I would like to invite Christina Murphy, the Coordinator of the Task Advisor Y M C A, and also Dana Brown, to actually introduce the team. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation. They're going to talk about Faces of Recovery, and we have amazing group of students who are going to talk about the experience during this project. And we also have amazing guests on the background who are going to talk and share about their experiences. So I would like to see if Mr. Brown and Ms. Murphy are going to come and introduce the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, Chair Christensen, and other esteemed members. My name is Dana Brown, and I am here tonight representing Malden Overcoming Addiction, a partner in this project. I'm joined by Chris Murphy, who is the Project Coordinator for the Task Program, and also Peg Crowe, who's the Executive Director of the Malden Y W C A. I'm here to introduce this remarkable project led by the Malden Y W C A Task Program, supported by Malden Overcoming Addiction. TASK stands for Teen Advocates Sharing Knowledge. All of the young women in the program are students in the Malden Public Schools. The real heroes in this project are these young ladies and the human beings that they interviewed for this project, a few who are here tonight. So I would like to introduce some of our voices of recovery and ask them to stand tonight and be recognized. This program started last spring when the young ladies decided to apply for a grant. And with the support of Chris Murphy, they contacted Malden Overcoming Addiction, Paul Hammersley. And this led to learning, and this led to action, a series of meetings, of which I was able to join some during the summer. The result is this incredible Faces of Recovery storyboard project, highlighting the stories of people in recovery, real human beings, some of whom right now work for Malden Overcoming Addiction as part of Malden Cares and are heading off shortly to the Malden Warming Center, where they'll be working tonight. Leading the group during the summer, in addition to Chris Murphy, was their student advisor, Sabrina Montero. Sabrina is with us here tonight. She is a Dean's List student at UMass Lowell and also a graduate of Malden High School. Sabrina led these young women through this project, and what you see is the result. The following young women were part of the project, some of whom will follow me and speak. Michi Joseph, Mia Hernandez, Tracy Nungia, Kimora Hatron, Nevea Georges, Anna Eskivell, Taisha Ballin, Joy Lugo Morales. I want to get right to the work. It is my pleasure to introduce the young women, who will come up to present on the work they have done representing the Malden Y W C A Task.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here with you all today. We are the Y W C A Task Program, which stands for Teen Advocates Sharing Knowledge, and we're going to be talking about our Faces of Recovery project. The journey of this project began with funding by a grant from the Greater Boston Council on Alcoholism. The Task Advisor, Malden's Moving Coordinator, Chris Murphy, and Paul Hammersley from Malden Overcoming Addiction worked collaboratively in designing the project. We partnered together in the hope of raising awareness for substance use disorders. The process of our Faces of Recovery project began with Malden Overcoming Addiction providing us with the interviewees. We interviewed twelve people of various backgrounds, genders, and ages. Every week, we would interview at least one person. We would be split into two groups. While one group was interviewing, the other group would be transcribing and writing summaries of the previous interview. To prepare for the interviews, we would practice our questions and interviewing techniques. We also learned the proper term and definition of substance use disorder. Lastly, we posted on our social media accounts to promote our event. The most influential part of this project was listening to and learning about the stories and experiences the interviewees had to tell. It gave us a better understanding that anybody can go through this situation and experiences and the obstacles they faced. This showed us the importance of taking the time to listen to their stories and the difficult times they overcame. The project altered the views we have on others, allowing us not to jump to conclusions or make assumptions of people, knowing that anybody we passed by could be going through something similar. This is important because after reading the stories of each of these individuals, we can show you that substance use disorder does not discriminate. The main goal of this project is to find ways in which youth can gain resources to prevent their substance use disorders. We know that there are not a lot of places that offer services to youth under eighteen. We want to tell youth where assistance is available and address gaps in the system. Adults often struggle to understand and listen to teens because of our age and not believing the situations that we go through. Youth are reluctant to tell their stories because they are guarded due to individuals who stereotype them. The Malden High Teen Health Center appears to be a solid resource for youth to gain assistance. The Health Center is available for youth ages twelve and twenty-four. However, many youth may not know that this resource even exists. Malden High School is the most diverse high school in the state, and students come from homes that reflect the diversity. For students who are first generation, there are often conflict in fitting in at school and having cultural worlds collide. Substance use and mental health disorders are often tabooed and stigmatized in home environments. We want youths to have the courage to speak up and advocate for themselves with no judgment and no fear.
We want youths to be listened to. We want to work collaboratively, brainstorm together, and create accessible resources that are both affordable and effective. Through this collaboration, we can create greater support systems that will make and impact and implement change. If you are not a part of the solution, you are part of the problem.
Does anybody have any questions?
Let's open it up to questions of the members. Any questions? Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Be very quick. Thank you so much to everyone that does all the work behind the scenes when it comes to this type of work, and all of you guys, you know, should be very proud of yourselves when it comes to making sure that you give back to the community in this type of way. And just thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Welldie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not a question so much as I'll express my gratitude as well, because I think the number one thing that you listed in your conclusion, I don't think there's a single person up here who doesn't want you to be listened to. I think we need more of your voice on a regular basis, and I think you are lucky that you have some of the best through lines to that possible with Chris Murphy, with Dana Brown, with Peg Crowe. I think the folks who are involved in many different facets of this community are the perfect vehicles to help amplify your voices so that more people can hear you. So I appreciate you taking the time to come and talk to us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Welldie. Anybody else? Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate a lot of what Mr. Welldie said, but also, as a parent of a teen at the high school, I think it's really important that students are hearing it from their peers. You know, I know my kids, if I say something, it's going in one ear and out the other. They may be afraid to come and talk to me. They may think that they've disappointed their parents, but when their own peers are there speaking up, saying, "We're here for you. We will help. We will do whatever we can." It's really important. So I give you kudos, big applause for what you're doing, and I hope to see it grow. But at the same time, I hope that this advocacy works in a way that it's not needed, that kids can say, "I don't need to pick up drugs. I don't need to pick up alcohol." And I have the support of my peers that back me on that. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Batafora. Mr. Gray, followed by Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really impressed with this. As someone who, as a young child, grew up in a drug and gang-infested neighborhood in Boston, this really hits close to home. You got a grant to do this for? Okay. I see some of your next steps that you're going to pass this on. My hope is that you inspire another generation of teenagers, as you go through the schools, to follow in your footsteps and help guide them to stay out of that path. When I was a teenager in the seventies, I had no one to guide me, and it was a miracle I got through that relatively unscathed, mainly because of my parents. And if there were some sort of support group like this when I was a child, I probably would have gravitated to it. And I just want to say with everyone else, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Bernard.
You know, I also wanted to go in and say thank you. I think this is very important. I was very impressed when you guys went and did this back in November. You did an incredible job about a subject that has a lot of stigma attached to it, and I also have a lot of addiction issues that are in my family, and I think it's, when you go back and you look at those posters, you don't see enough... One of the common threads that struck me is that a lot of those stories started with, "I started in high school. I started when I was twelve, thirteen, fourteen." That's when this started. And being the face and allowing your peers, some of the kids that are coming behind you to say, "Hey, it's okay to talk about this stuff," and even if they are just in the beginning steps of doing this, to say, "Hey, if this is starting to hit you, we're faces that you can come to. You're not alone." I think this is just incredibly powerful, and I thank each and every one of you for doing this work. Really, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Let's go to our student representative.
I love what you guys did. This is awesome. Like, especially, like, this is so cool, especially like as a student at Malden High and knowing that you guys are taking the steps in order to achieve what you want instead of just doing the research. That's like, I think that's an amazing job, especially like from the Y W C A, a place that I've grown up in. I've known Chris my entire life, and, you know, I think you guys did an awesome job. I absolutely love this, and I'm really excited for you guys to continue with this.
Very good. Mr. Brown, do you want to present the last slide? Or?
No, I think...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent, and members of the School Committee. This has been a great collaboration, but the work clearly is just beginning, not ending. What you see in the back is just one of the most powerful exhibits I've seen in my forty-plus years in education, and to think it was created by young people for young people speaks volumes to what's happening in the world, and so we, I think, owe them another round of applause for the work they've done. Finally, the Y W C A is the owner of the work that has been done. It was paid for by a grant, and it is my hope that the Malden Public Schools will continue to work with and support the Task Program and Malden Overcoming Addiction in bringing these issues into the schools as part of a much more comprehensive health education approach to substance use prevention. Malden Overcoming Addiction and the Task Program are ready and willing. The School Department is ready and willing. I can tell you that we met, the girls met with the superintendent and Mr. Conifry and others a few weeks back. I can promise you, they will not let this go. I can say that with all surety. This is not the last that you've heard of this group. I'm confident of that. They know what they're talking about. They have some great ideas about moving forward. And again, I want to thank you for your time, and I want to thank them for all of their work. Thank you.
So you're going to be seeing our students in the schools. We have an actual plan, so the work is just beginning because a lot of work that we need to do in our schools. So thank you so much, and have a good night, guys.
Thank you so much.
Bye. Thank you.
All right. Now the Malden High School Health Center.
So last... Introduce them.
Go ahead.
So this work has been, in the work for many, many years, and I have to say that I learned about this work through Maria Luis when she came to the office, and she said, "This is a wonderful thing that's happening for the schools." So I had to say, "Thank you for your vision, for sharing with me." And I know we are going to have two presenters to talk about the wonderful things that are happening in our school with the Health Center.
Very good.
Thank you, Superintendent Noriega Murphy, Mr. Mayor, and School Committee. I'd like to start off by thanking the mayor and mayor's office, Maria Luis. This is a long time coming. As many of you know, we've been at this for many, many years. So thank you for your unwavering support in making this a reality. May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, the Teen Health Center at Malden High School began providing services in any language to any individuals in Malden, ages twelve to twenty-four. The Teen Health Center builds on years of partnership between the City of Malden, Cambridge Health Alliance, Tufts University Family Medicine Residency. The Malden Teen Health Center at the high school is a safe space where we can remove barriers to health care and where, together, providers and school staff help students gain confidence and skills they need to be healthy and maximize their learning. Our efforts to promote the Teen Health Center, joint effort with the school and the district, we do so through tabling, school communications to students and families, athletic department, informational sessions within classrooms, educational sessions in community-based organizations. The Teen Health Center is open Monday through Friday, eight to noon, for primary care, sexual and reproductive health, as well as mental health services. Thursdays, twelve-thirty to four, for basic oral health. Now, students are excused from classes for the time of their appointment within the Health Center. During school breaks, summer break, the clinics closed. However, care will continue at the C H A's Canal Street Primary Care Clinic or via telehealth. Now, Deputy Chief Community Officer Roberta will share some data details for the services that have been provided thus far.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you to everyone so much for having us here. I'm Roberta Cherevise, the Deputy Chief Community Officer for the Cambridge Health Alliance. Congratulations, Maria, and all of you on this wonderful opportunity. I've not been part of the team that made this all happen, except for since March, so it is, I feel very privileged to be here to be able to share this exciting, you know, resource with you and kind of where we are. So on that note, I am also here with my colleagues, Doug Crest, the Chief Community Officer, and Hannah Miller, who is one of the, who is a social worker and one of the behavioral health providers in the teen center as well. So how many students have we helped? As Charlie said, we've been open since, well, really only a couple of weeks in the spring, but for this past fall semester, two hundred and twenty-six individual students. And so it's actually, we, I did get some oral health numbers, so it's two hundred and thirty-nine individual students, and we've also had about four hundred and actually twenty-four visits. So obviously, a student can come multiple times, so that's where the difference in those numbers are. Mental health, about a hundred and fifty visits. Primary care services, about two hundred of those. So again, immunizations, physicals, sports physicals, right? So sick visits. Sexual health, which is a lot of birth control. It could be S T I or S T D testing and treatment. It could also just be conversations about healthy relationships and counseling around sexual health. And oral health, which is fairly basic oral health, and, you know, it's not like anything invasive. What really is, is counseling, some screening, some routine kind of emergency things like fluoride varnish, dental ceilings, you know, those kinds of things. So pretty basic, but one of the great success stories on oral health specifically was, one of the doctors did talk to a student who said they had never been to the dentist. And so it was a real opportunity for that dentist to be able to provide just education around oral health, sugar, the impact of sugar. The student was very proud to talk about all the vitamin C they got through juice. Unfortunately, didn't really understand what that impact was on their teeth. So it was a really great success story. And, of course, given Malden's diverse population, you know, these students represent dozens of ethnicities and languages. And then the only other thing that I wanted to mention, I don't know if there's another slide for this, but is the way in which the services are provided, the Teen Health Center, Malden is very fortunate to have the Family Medicine Clinic on Canal Street. The Teen Health Center model is based on our Family Medicine model, which is a little bit unique with respect to school-based health centers. School-based health centers traditionally have a nurse practitioner, right, behavioral health folks, but we're really able to leverage the residency program with Tufts to be able to serve the students with doctors. The residents aren't training, but there is always a preceptor who is there with the students, the residents. So they're really getting the same kind of care they could be getting at the primary care clinic. Mental health services, we have a social worker, Hannah Miller, and we also have a psychiatrist on staff. We also have a community health educator, who in fact worked with the task students and some of their work in substance abuse resources, and who does a lot of the tabling that Charlie mentioned, a lot of the promotional work, Instagram. And then, of course, just like any clinic, your standard kind of medical assistants, a front desk and nurse manager. So very proud of the work that we're doing and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Let's open it up. Questions of the members. Mr. Welldie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you both, all of you, for being here and for doing what you do. I think, you know, if I may for a sec just say, this particular center and this project means a lot to me. You know, we spent almost two years in subcommittee meetings with Renee Camerata-Hamilton and our policy committee, I think in two thousand and ten and eleven, and I remember being at that ribbon cutting in May and thinking that it was ten years ago that we took the vote to authorize doing this. So when you think about the persistence, that projects, projects like this, that really, it's a no-brainer, and it's something that we should definitely have and support and help flourish. I am so grateful. You know, we do this part-time. You know, I'm so grateful to the people on the ground, like the two of you, people like Maria Luis, who have helped make sure that this project, every chance that it had to sort of falter, was propped back up, because these are the real statistics and data of kids that it's helping. So thank you. And my question is super simple, not really. It's, what's next? And what can we do to support you? Is there anything tangible that you need from us that we can do, I think, to support the center, to support the work that you're doing? It's a big question, I guess.
Yeah. Thank you, Adam. That's a good question. I think where you can provide some support, assistance, is getting the word out there on a consistent basis, right? So we've been working and coming up, brainstorming some ideas, social media and so forth, and we've talked amongst ourselves, within a group. We meet, Maria leads us once a month in meetings, so moving... So moving forward, just continuously getting the word out there, making sure that students know that it exists right there at the high school and all of the services that are provided there. And it's not just sport physicals. Although it's absolutely God sent, it's a huge help for the athletic department. But there's so many other services, like to hear that a student, that was the first time a student ever went to the dentist. It's both great and kind of sad at the same time. But how many other students are out there that, that may be going through this, that situation, right? So I would say that's where the city helped, the city could really help us to just, you know, promote it more. The mayor and I are very good, social media. So.
Yeah, thank you. If I can just add on to that, your continued support, I think, comes in many forms and getting the word out and letting us know, you know, clearly through Charlie, Maria and the, and the team, you know, how things are going. You know, clearly if we had hundreds of millions of dollars at our disposal, we would increase the capacity. But we, we understand our finite resources. But yes, please, you know, please do give us the feedback. We would really appreciate that as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, over to Ms. Batafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To kind of piggyback off of like, what can we do? There's one thing that sticks out in, in my head is just the hours offered. And while it's offered to youth 12 to 24, those that are, say, 12, 13 are in our middle schools and not necessarily in that building, making it difficult to access. Is there any thoughts on extending hours to after-school time where, you know, after 2:15, those youth can make their way to the center to be seen for whatever it may be?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. Actually, so we, we came up with these hours based on our other teen health centers and the volume that they see. We have had some after-school hours also at the other teen centers and we had not seen very much usage there. So this was the way to try to provide as many services as possible to the closest possible students, understanding that, of course, there are others. We are certainly open to trying a different schedule if there's an, you know, overwhelming kind of request for that. This was our first year at this particular school. So we're absolutely more than welcome to, you know, to have that conversation if there are other hours that we would like to entertain. That we have talked about it with the team, that we would evaluate how things are going. And so that, that particular feedback is, I think, really important for us to know. And, and any other comments people have with respect to the schedule?
Yeah, I think it would be, you know, you provided some basic numbers. Maybe just like, you know, on your end, not to give you any more work to do, but the, the data behind how many students in that age group are?
Oh, yeah. In terms, in terms of the 12 to 14, it's only like four. So of those 226 students, there are only about four or five, if I remember correctly, in, in the middle school age group.
Sure.
And then the 19-plus is another about eight or so.
Okay.
So it's the, the bulk is the.
Sure. And I would suspect so, being right there, localized. You know, I said to my own child, I'm like, you need a health physical, like for sports, like just pop in over there so mom doesn't have to drive all the way to the pediatrician.
Exactly. But I would say though, for those families that don't have a primary care provider, the teen center is actually more readily available in terms of appointments. So if there is a family, for example, a new family who doesn't have a primary care provider already, they could get that same physical at the teen health center, as though they would be going to the pediatrician or somewhere else.
Yep.
But for example, they might not have established care somewhere yet. They could come to CHA through the teen center and get appointment much quicker than they probably would through the pediatrician's office. So maybe that's something we need to do a better job of talking about.
So I was gonna say, maybe we should be promoting within our own, like when we're registering new students, you know, new to the city, new to the country. That's something they probably don't have an established, you know, care provider. So I think that's something we could definitely do on our end. And then just my last question was in regard to coming out of COVID. I know we talk a lot about mental health and I see the services offered include diagnosing, psychotherapy. How do you handle? Do you handle everything within or do you do a lot of like out, like referring out to like neuropsych evaluations? Just for my own curiosity, how does the mental health aspect of it work?
Hannah, did you want to come up here and provide a little bit more in detail on how exactly you? As I said, we bring in the professionals when we don't have all the answers all the time, but.
Hi, thank you. Yes, we do refer out. As many people are aware, getting a neuropsych evaluation or something to that degree can take up to a year. Waitlists are very long. But I tend to refer out to a couple of providers that I know do a really thorough job. If a child needs a neuropsych evaluation, we usually have them contact the special ed department first and ask for an IEP or core evaluation prior to doing that. Schools can usually do it faster than they can get it done independently, but we do refer out. I also wanted to just address your question about the middle school or the elementary school. I see those kids virtually, so they do still have access. I do have some kids on my caseload that are elementary school students and have access to me through virtual sessions.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Batafor. Anybody else, if not from the chair, I just want to say that you began your remarks very appropriately by thanking Maria Luis and everyone else because that's exactly what happened over the past several years. She just refused to let go and that's why we are where we are today. Let me ask you, of the 226 students, is it what you thought that would be at this point? Or were there no projections?
I do think that, yes, I think there were projections. I believe we're right on target, maybe just a little bit below, but not by much. But I think a lot of it was actually thanks to a lot of the sports physicals and the general immunizations at the beginning of the year that these numbers. I think it is really difficult for us, not necessarily to get the word out, but for students to get trust and comfort in coming down and, you know, leaving class. So, but I think we are pretty close to where we wanted to be.
Okay, and on the social worker and the psychiatrist, we're at 20 hours and five hours respectively. Is that sufficient at the outset? Or do you think we should be or could be doing more there? I know it's a financial cost, but.
It's, it's the financial cost. We could absolutely use more hours there for sure. You know, as Hannah was saying, they're, they're waitless, right? She has 35 on hers, the psychiatrist has 20 on hers. So any opportunity to increase at least, you know, mental health is always, I think, a good opportunity.
Maybe I shouldn't ask that because I see Maria taking notes. So plan on that being in the next budget.
Yeah, she's gonna follow up on that.
Yeah. And then regarding language access, do you have people on staff or are you using devices for language access?
We have an interpreter service. So we have any language that any student, you know, speaks either through an interpreter on the phone for an in-person visit or via telehealth, the same thing, kind of on the phone.
Okay. And let me just say to the committee, what makes this really impressive and remarkable is that most of these are funded through a state grant, which we opted not to take only because it would have limited in what we could offer. So again, Maria and others felt that mental health in the students, students told us repeatedly that mental health was key and oral health. And that was not something that surprisingly the state allowed for. So we just said, we're gonna, we're gonna go this one alone. And you know, that's painful. I mean, we try to take every grant that we can, but because we were so determined to follow through on what the students had said and what the community had said, that, you know, we're picking this up ourselves. So, are there any other questions from the members? If not, Ms. Batafor.
Thank you. It just came to me because we talked about oral health and, and physicals and whatnot. Any thoughts on adding like vision to offerings to be able? And, and I'm just, you know, thinking like, say, a student goes to like the nurse's office in the school and something pops up in that visit, can the nurse say, "Why don't you go check with the doctor at the teen health center?" Like, all of a sudden blurry vision, like just curious if that's on your radar.
I think vision is probably part of your basic primary care, but beyond that, I haven't been part of any of those conversations. So I'm sure, budget allowing, if that's something we're interested in.
Sure.
But I, I have not heard that conversation come up, but it would be something I can definitely bring back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, take it away.
So I understand that the, the nurse's office has menstrual products. I just wanted to understand, like, if you guys provide that as well? If you guys have a greater spectrum of menstrual products and also provide like menstrual education and women's health? Because I find that a lot of women at the high school don't understand about periods and their growth within their own bodies and things like that. So I wanted to know to what extent you guys offer that in your care?
That's a great question. So actually, the community health educator I was speaking about earlier, Tanisha Lahens, she's actually part of the Sexual Reproductive Health Program. So in addition to the primary care docs, we're able to talk more about that with any student who would like to learn more about it. We also have a dedicated community health educator who can spend time one-on-one with a patient, talking more about, whether it's menstrual cycles or even, you know, like sexual health in general and relationships. In the clinic, we actually do have a lot of menstrual products. They're not the ones that you would get from public health or like the hospital, really big pads and awful things like that. We actually buy them from our Sexual Reproductive Health Program. So we try to get actually teen appropriate products. We have other types of hygiene products as well, even like shampoo, you know, things to brush your teeth and, you know, all those kinds of things. Just because we know that there are sometimes, you know, accidents occur or, you know, some folks may be homeless, right? So yes, we, we are able to do that and actually scheduling an appointment with the, the teen, with the community health educator could be a really great way of, of having that kind of a conversation as well.
And, and just to add on to that, does that also extend to contraceptive?
Exactly. Yes, it does. So all, all Sexual Reproductive Health visits, so with regards to contraception or STIs, those are free and confidential. Not even parent consent is needed. So any student can come down and learn more, make it, and make an appointment with either a provider or the community health educator, make an appointment, talk about it, get access to contraceptives. Actually, and this is a great thing about the Malden Teen Center being based on family medicine, we'll actually do IUD insertions and next-gen insertions right in the school as opposed to our other teen clinics where there's only one provider, so they're, they're not able to do them. So that is something that is, it's a full-service basically, a family medicine clinic. So they're able to do that right, right in the clinic as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, on behalf of all of us, thank you. I know Maria said this before, that the other thing is we would not be where we are without Cambridge Health. I mean, you two have been there from the beginning and on behalf of all of us, we want to say thank you for staying with us and now being a part of this great center.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, everyone. So now we'll go back to the regular portion of our agenda, the approval of minutes. Regular session minutes of December 5th, 2022. Motion by Ms. Batafor, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Item number two is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee. We only ask that you state your name and address for the record and we ask that you keep your remarks to no more than three minutes. Public comment is now open.
Just a reminder for folks online, just use the raise hand feature Zoom or dial star nine if you're on the telephone and we'll toggle between in-person and if we have any virtuous.
Good evening.
Great, good evening. My name is Emmy Sarah, I live on 39 Bowman Street. And I am looking forward to hearing tonight's report out on AAP recommendations and the future of that program. I come to you today in good faith and from the heart, truly as a Malden public school parent. And I wanted to just share a couple of things and perspectives with you and I'll make it brief. But as you know, early last year, a few of us heard that the program was going and we banded together a bunch of parents, teachers, students. We, we just asked why, you know, what can we do? What's wrong? What's broken? How can we fix it? And we wanted it to be available to everybody. We learned a lot through that process, I'm sure we all did. We spoke to principals, school site council, we spoke with you, we spoke with you, Mr. Mayor, we spoke with the superintendent's team. We went door-to-door, we talked to other parents to get their perspectives on this. We discussed the challenges, the opportunities. We really all learned so much together on this topic. We learned that you were willing here at the school committee to pause and listen, which was a great moment for me personally. I haven't missed a school committee meeting since, so I've, I've been on board. And we learned that acceleration, it's not novel. It's, it's available in charter schools, it's there, it's in private schools, it's in public schools, with the exception of Mass in California. Every other state does this. We also learned that many students in Malden needed these services beyond what we originally thought and beyond the kids that were in the program. We found a bunch of sound policies and procedures from other schools who had been doing it well for a very long time and we shared those with you in hopes that we could collaborate and figure out, you know, what would work for Malden specifically. And another, another pivotal point was that a brave child, as you can remember, came up here and shared her experience of how AAP affected her very positively for second, third grade. And she said she thrived and she was challenged. And the research backs her up. So these early years really are pivotal to help challenge kids within their zone of proximal development. That's the time to get them, right? And so, you know, even honors mentioned previously, which I'm looking forward to hear more about, really doesn't address the needs of the younger grades. So I'd like to see us think about that a little bit more. And then last year, we also learned about a research study from the National Center for Research on Gifted Education. They were doing a study on improving acceleration and it came at the right time. And they were like, "We're gonna give you resources, we're gonna give you people to facilitate, we're gonna share policies with you, we're gonna help you make this happen." And we missed that bus, but the good news is that that offer is still out there for us to seize and, and take that opportunity for the 2023, 2024 school year. And then the final perspective that I wanted to share is that I, I really do appreciate hearing the high-level AAP updates. I did hear that participation was waning and I couldn't help but think that, you know, this room was packed not that long ago with people on all sides of the issue, sorry, all sides of the issue, who are really willing to engage and, and help as a community. So I just want to remind you that we're still here and we're hopeful that that will still happen. I also want to thank the subcommittee in advance. I know we haven't heard the report out yet, but I know this is a lot of time, a lot of effort put in by a lot of people. What would be the most discouraging outcome tonight is that we are in the same place we were 10 months ago. And my hope is that we hear some solid recommendations and we walk out tonight with a really clear vision. Next year is gonna come fast and there are kids that have been waiting three years for these services now. So please, I hope we finally find a path forward and there are many of us ready to move forward and do this work together. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so you know, I do not anticipate any votes being cast this evening. This is more informational for the committee.
Great.
And then we will go from there.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now. We typically toggle back and forth, no one on Zoom. If not, we will move on. Please.
Good evening, members. Isaac Slavitt, 14 Galeno Street. Like many parents who are here this evening, we're joining virtually, virtually. I'm an MPS parent and also another member of the parents' group, the advisory council. We're glad that AAP is on the agenda and we look forward to hearing the superintendent's report. Over the last few weeks, we've been discussing tonight's meeting with other caregivers and want to reflect back some questions that many hope to have greater clarity on after tonight's discussion. So here are some of the questions that folks in the community have. First, what is the plan for this fall? Have preparations been made so that we will still be on track, depending on what direction the school committee ultimately takes? What has been done over the last nine months to get us ready for this fall? What is the expected format for the working group's final deliverables? When will they be presented and to whom? How will the public be involved? Does the administration plan to share any of their future draft policy positions in written form prior to meetings, allowing enough time for the public to understand what will be discussed? Some common questions we've heard. Some common questions we've heard with regard to the AAP policies and procedures that are still currently in place are, first, what training have teachers been sent to or scheduled for? What criteria were used or will be used going forward to determine which teachers would attend? Are lower grades going to be enrolled in the fall? If so, how will that be rolled out? And if not, what is the rational basis for that decision? For fall 2023, how are we as a district going to catch up on what equity researchers and advocates in the field of advanced learning would identify as best practices? For example, are we planning to reconsider the near-perfect disciplinary requirements? Or the requirements to have exceptional grades in all subjects in order to be in advanced learning settings for any subjects, both being well-understood equity roadblocks, especially for twice-exceptional students? Are we planning to reduce the extra administrative burden on prospective parents in terms of paperwork, meetings, recommendations, and all of the process that was added last fall? Another extremely well-understood source of equity concerns from the academic literature. Perhaps most importantly, what is the general vision on meeting these needs across the district? We've enjoyed speaking with all of you repeatedly throughout this process and hearing your views. While there are some differences of opinion on implementation, one thing we've consistently heard from every single one of you is an acknowledgement that these needs exist and need to be served somehow, whether in a centralized fashion or in each school, whether limited to budget-neutral reclustering or something more ambitious. The sky's the limit for this community. Malden can regain its place as a leader in advanced education, adopting modern views and best practices based on research and proven models in other communities, allowing each student to flourish by meeting them where they are with the services that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now. All right, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. We'll now go to our superintendent for her report.
Thank you, and thank you, parents, for taking the time to come and talk about, you know, so thank you for doing that. Um, so my report is, I just want to highlight the Malden Public Schools rocks. Uh, thanks to, uh, Mr. Stephen Frecker, we have been able to highlight everything that is happening, all positive, all great news in this school, so you can see, uh, your children in there and also everything that's going on in our amazing schools. As of today, uh, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges are visiting the high school, uh, tomorrow's their last day, and they just come for review, uh, and they are the, this is the association that credits all the high schools in New England. So good luck to, uh, Mr. Master Angelo, who must be exhausted, uh, by spending a lot of time, uh, meeting with them and also with wonderful students and educators. Uh, just a reminder that, uh, Mother Luther King Junior Day celebration is, uh, going to take place on January 16. No schools, but we want to make sure that in our schools, we also remember the amazing achievements of his life and the impact that it still has in our lives. Uh, Lunar New Year is going to be January 22nd. And then, uh, um, poetry outlaw, outlaw finals are going to be on January 23rd. So I have to say congratulations to the high school and to the amazing group of students who have been there and taking challenges, and it's very, uh, amazing to see them, uh, competing, uh, just being there and also supporting their classmates. So, Mr. Master Angelo, kudos to you again in your school. So we are going to, uh, also ask for, uh, next slide, I'm sorry, is number three? Oh. Is to make sure that if you have an opportunity to, uh, be part of the equity team, uh, this is, uh, the work that is moving the district, so you can join us, uh, to support the district, uh, community addressing equity and base concerns. So therefore, please just join us, uh, we have the website, uh, link in there, but if you have, you want to email us, I know it's cover, but it's equity@maldenps.org if you want to join us, uh, in any of the teams. Now we're going to slide 20. Thank you. All right. So. I think that we all have experienced that, uh. Okay. Oh, there you go. So I'm just going to continue, actually, with the enrollment.
Let's take brief recess.
Okay. All right, no problem.
Martha, you're on my screen, so I'm just, can you hear us? No, okay. Hold on, I'm going to stop, share.
Hold on, he, he might be back, I don't know. Are you back yet?
Huh? No, 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 yeah.
What?
Yeah, it wa, it, it wasn't the update.
That's Joe.
All right.
Joe Gray, I'm saying you don't want this to be happening while you're doing an update.
Amanda, I can see you, which is the only reason I'm asking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we are sort of back on.
It's not an issue with the network, yeah. So can you get, get us back?
I think we can.
All right, yeah, we're going to try to make this work.
Oh, I've got something in the.
All right, thank you very much.
We can hear now, oh, you are the best. Let me get our screen back up.
Okay, school committee is back. Over to our superintendent.
Okay. So slide 20. And that's it. Okay, so as always, we give you, uh, an update on the enrollment. You can see it breaking up per school, grade level. We have 6,435 students. And on the next slide, you can see the historical comparative enrollment data. So, uh, we have 6,435. Last month, we had 6,441 students. Uh, we want to remind all the parents and caregivers that attendance is critical for our student success, and then in January, we have only 15 days left, February 15, March is the longest month, it's 23 days, and then you can see the other days. So we just want to make sure that please send your students to school on time because it's critical that they are going to be in the classes. Another update that we have is for human resources. So we have 117 staff that require licensure attention, and we broke it down in different, uh, areas. So we have 30, uh, educators who need SEI endorsement and content licensure, 80 require only content, and seven require only SEI endorsement. You can also see that we have staff on DESI waivers, staff on emergency licensures from 2020. Uh, so you can actually look at all the entry points. The human resources department is working very, very, uh, hard trying to make sure that the all, every single, uh, staff member educator knows what the status is, and also giving them the heads-up, how they can apply to renew their licensures. So, um, kudos to the human resources department, Larissa, for working intensely, also with the MEA, trying to make sure that, uh, all these, um, educators are going to be fully licensed before the annual school year. We are going to also, uh, we are off, offering a lot of support assistance for any educator who needs MTL. We are actually getting vouchers for them. We have a partnership with Cambridge College that is also giving one-on-one consultation to staff. So anybody who has questions about the licensure, they can just pick up the phone. We have a contact in person for them, so they don't have to navigate through Cambridge College. It's one person that is working with us. Uh, we also are offering a lot of professional development, so, um, anybody can actually start signing up for, uh, PDs or professional development points. So when they apply with DESI, they are going to be able to get the licensure. Uh, we also have the demographics of our district, and, uh, you can see a historical demographic from 19, uh, 20, uh, 2019, 2020, 2020, 2021, 2021, 22. And you can see that we are working very hard to diversify our, our, uh, our staff. And a little gains in here, so as you can see, African-Americans, uh, we are 40, uh, staff members and Asian, 32.7, uh, Hispanic, 33, but we still have, uh, white, uh, staff members, 696. Uh, multi-race is at 10.5. Uh, we just want to make sure that we diversify our staff so that it reflects the cultural of students. Next slide, please. In enrollment, we, uh, have eight students, uh, in the queue from kindergarten, and in grades one to 12 is 35 students, I mean, applications that, uh, still need to be processed. In the waiting list, BB, uh, we don't have any openings for kindergarten, grade four and grade six. You can see in February, we don't have any openings on grade one, four, and six. And London, we don't have any openings on grade eight. We do have waiting lists, and according to, uh, how students or seats come available, we go straight to the waiting list. Thank you. Uh, this is an update on most, our after-school program, uh, before school. Uh, we have been able to enroll more students. We still, uh, looking for more staff. Anytime we have more students, we are willing to pay and hire people, but we don't have enough candidates. So if you know anybody who would like to work for us, please let us know, because that's what we need. In order to open and get rid of the waiting list, we need more staffing. And the waiting list has been reduced from, um, uh, to 12. Last time, we had actually 103, uh, in the waiting list overall. Thank you, thanks. Open positions, we have 55, uh, open positions, and, and you can see it in every school. This, uh, report is going to be available, uh, tomorrow morning in our website, so I won't go into details of every single school, but you can see the openings that they have. And these positions change, uh, as we are hiring. And please, again, if you know anybody who would like to work for us, just let us know, and the list is right there. Thank you. Uh, we have been postponing a great, uh, presentation, that that is a special ed department presentation, and I'm going to ask our assistant superintendent for special services, uh, to come and present. Uh, once again, this presentation has been postponed almost four times, and actually should be the first one that we should have, but, um, Ms. McDonald, the floor is all yours.
Thanks. So, um, I did a couple of things. The first thing I did is I looked at our data over three years. If you look at, um, students on IAPs, one of the things that has, has jumped between last year, I mostly took October 1 data because it's a pinpoint that, um, DESI takes for every single district, so it makes it a good sort of starting point. I will say, with enrollment numbers across the board, they can shift at any given time, and we do see that, um, when we get down out of district, I'll talk a little more about that. But I do think over the last three years, when we were not, um, in school, our number of evaluations dropped, because when we didn't have kids in front of us, we weren't evaluating at the same rate. And now that we've been back in school for a full year, we have found more kids eligible. I think, um, every district in the state, as well as the state numbers, have risen, and we are still below the state average, which is great. When you are below the state average for students with disabilities, it means that you have good, um, tier one and tier two in place. What you find in districts that have really large, um, percentages of students with disabilities is that they don't have great core instruction, they don't have tier-two support. So I do think that's kudos to Malden, that our numbers are, are slightly below the state average. Um, our 504s have stayed, um, pretty consistent, they are starting to rise. We do, um, I have to give, um, a shout-out to our two 504 coordinators that we brought on about mid-year last year. They've done a great job of making sure during the pandemic, um, and with the changeover of my position, there was a little bit of a shuffling with that. I do think there was some lost in translation there, and we have been able to bring in two really solid 504 coordinators to help with the K-8s, um, and the high school, as we'll be getting one as well, to help there. So that, you do see a slight rise this year, and I think that is due to the, um, consistency in that position and the strength that we have brought to that position in the last year. Um, the MCAS alt numbers, we have been tasked by DESI to get to 1%, which is tough. We are not there, many urban districts are not, but you can see our numbers are gradually moving in the right direction. Signs, we got a little bit of a blip, but other than that, over the last three years, our numbers have, um, gone in the right direction. Same thing with our four-year graduation rate. The one thing I want to point out is the five-year graduation is the adjusted rate, so those numbers are not available yet from last year because they wait until, you have a lot of summer graduates, so those are not released by DESI. Um, I don't want to put out any numbers that DESI has not already released, so there are a few spots that those are not available yet. Um, our PRS letters of findings and corrective action, when I came in, we had five of them on the table. Since then, um, we have not had a letter of finding that required corrective action, um, which I think is huge. One of those is that when we do get letters of findings, we work really hard to work with parents, because when you get a letter of finding, no matter what, you're put in a bad position, because you now have to do corrective action, and the parent also, there's a break in that relationship. So we, as a, as a philosophy, um, work really hard when we get a complaint to work with the parent to say, what can we do to fix this and make this right? And I think that has helped a lot, because it allows you to build, rebuild that trust with the parent. So we have had a lot of success with that. Our out-of-district numbers are dropping. Um, the one thing about out-of-district, I do think 71 is pretty much where we are. Um, there are a few students out there that are awaiting placement. One of the things that happens, a lot of our students, they're out of district, also have DCF involvement. Um, they are hospitalized often, and so what happens, if they're hospitalized, we close the placement because after the hospitalization, you're not sure if they're going to stay. Um, we have kids in DCF custody that move around. They might be in Chelsea one week at a group home, next week, like, we have a student that is out in Clinton, and you cannot bust them back, so we've closed that placement, but we're awaiting another placement. While they're awaiting placement, they go into holding school, and they're not listed. So at any given time, we have a flux of students like that in, in a district like, urban districts like this, um, because of the involvement. So when you look at the out-of-district numbers that fluctuate, um, from month to month, that is, that is really why. I will say, the main reason that our numbers are going down are, are the rebuilding of our, of a true therapeutic program at the high school with the RISE program, and separating that out from the pathways program. Before, your pathways program is really designed for under, um, overaged, undercredited students. And we were also using that for a therapeutic program. So with the split of that program, we've been very successful. Last year, we were actually able to tuition in a. Last year, we were actually able to tuition in a student to our RISE program, and we're in the process of tuitioning someone in right now for an extended eval from a neighboring community. So that kind of pays for itself quickly when you do that. So we're really proud of those programs. We've partnered with outside agencies to rebuild those programs. I think next up on my docket would, to really look at our autism programs because that is our biggest percentage of students, the autism population. So that is next. And when we get to the further, and I'll talk about the other initiatives that we've had. So this one is, which is very interesting, and it's very interesting because I think there are a few places that have not correctly coded their staffing, but this is how many special ed teachers we have per hundred compared to other communities. So we have 12.2 special ed teachers per hundred students, which is really an incredible number if you look. We have the gold standard of special ed right now in the area, which is kudo. Same thing, we have a lot of SACS counselors, social adjustment counselors, related service. We really do have a lot in our district, which allows us to service kids, and I think is a testament to, you know, the funding that we've received for special ed. I do think that there are some districts, like Everett last, I looked at them from the year before, and it was much higher, so I don't know what they did with their coding because that doesn't really make sense to me that you'd only have 10 special ed teachers. But so this one is, oh, this is the percentage, and this is something I do think that we need to work on. Our percentage of sub-separate students is higher than a lot of other districts, and our inclusion rate is okay, but our partial rate is where we see. We're either an all-or-nothing district, so we really need to develop programming that can sort of go across the spectrum of student needs because we either put them sub-separate or completely included. So we need to figure out how to meet kids in the middle and transition them from the sub-separate over. So I think that is one place, if you look at the numbers, that we are below our neighboring So this one I just find interesting, and this is the intersection of students with disabilities and low income. And I think as a district, we should really start to look at our practices. We are doing that with our school psychologists and our team chairs when we're sitting at the evaluation table. Are we looking at, are there the low-income factors? Is that, you know, do we have some bias around children that come from low-income homes? Because we have a lot of our students have that cross-intersection. So it's just something that I found interesting and that I think that we need to take a closer look at as we go. So this is the preschool. So when we look at our rating for special ed, there are a few things that they rate us on, and one of them is our inclusion rate, indicate a five and indicate a six. Indicate a six is your preschool. And so we have to look at our rate of how many, of sub-separate rate at the preschool level is high. It's than some other districts. Some other districts are higher, but that is something that we've been working on. We've been working on that with the preschool. And Tamara, Ms. Lawrence, has done a great job of looking at ways to increase inclusion there, so we've been working on that. And this is our, just goes back, this is indicate a five, which is our inclusion rates throughout the district, and we're pretty consistent. There is a blur up in grade seven that we have a few extra. So, but it's also interesting to look over the five-year change. So this is, I just did a quick sort of synopsis of our programs and what we have for enrollment right now. RISE, which is our therapeutic program for students with emotional disabilities. We have lots of supports. They have their own therapeutic supports in place. We have our PACE program, which is at the BB and the high school, which is practical academics and community education. It focuses on students that have intellectual and/or autism spectrum disorders, and they really focus on functional academics. These are students that will most likely be with us until they're 22. We have the ILP, which includes our medically fragile group, and that is at Ferryway, Forestale, and Salemwood. We have been, you can see Forestale's enrollment is high. Before I got here, we had put all of our autism kids at Forestale, which is also our smallest enrollment school, which really skews how many students with special needs they have there. So we opened some classes at Ferryway, and we're trying to even out the numbers so that it's not such a burden on Forestale. But it took you many years to dig us into this problem, so it'll take us, oops, sorry, it'll take us many years to sort of get out of that because I don't want to take a sixth grader at Forestale and say, guess what, you got to go. So we're going to move them out gradually and try to get those numbers more in line so that it's not disproportionate, students with special needs there. Pathways is a longstanding program at the high school, which is an alternative program for students with and without disabilities. Next month, we are going to start piloting a program where we are looking to bring back students that were very close to graduation, as well as kids that are close to graduating now, to do some credit recovery, to get them just over that last little bit and get them to graduate. So the languages-based program was new this year. We have a brand-new teacher. We have Landmark that comes in and does coaching with us. It is, you know, Landmark is great, but it is, only takes certain kids, and it is far from us, and so we are really looking to build that program. Right now, we only have three kids, and that doesn't seem like a lot, but three kids that are here and not there is a big savings. And it's really going well, and we're, Landmark has a great outreach program, so we're working really hard with them to build that program, so I'm excited about that. And then lastly, this year, we opened an assessment center. So far, we have had six kids go through the assessment center, and it's been very successful because what we have really found, and I want to say it's really only K to three right now is all we've seen. We could go to four depending on who we had because you can have a 48-month span in there. But what we really saw last year was many, many of our K-1s who had not, who had not, due to the pandemic, gone to birthday parties, gone to the supermarket, you know, gone to preschool. They were struggling in the environment of a classroom of 20 kids. It's overwhelming to them. So they were going to out-of-district placement, out-of-district places to do an assessment, and they mostly stayed there. So now we have a place where we can look at them and say, what is going on with them? Do they need more structure? Do they need a smaller program? And we've been able, of those, one of them, yes, at the end, we said, this is not a, we can't service them. And he did go out, but the other ones are still with us. And we did tuition in one student from another school. They paid us to do the 40-day evaluation, and at the end, we said, here is the plan you need for them, and they said, we don't know if we can do that. And we said, we could do that, and he is now with us, and we are tuitioning him in. So that one student has actually paid for the program itself. So it's been a very nice addition. And I think that might be, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we are going to have Ms. Victoria Mulkern, Kara Havenish, Havenish, sorry, and Pam Staszewski, and they're going to do a mini summary of just the findings of iReady and iXL, a very short summary. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm just going to go a really rapid-fire rundown of our iReady winter benchmark scores. So we assess both iReady for ELA, iXL for math, a little before the mid-year point, and that's mostly because we have such a high population of English learner students who take access in January, so it's to spread out that testing. So we find that any growth is celebration in the winter benchmark. And from here, you can see the chart. The green represents students performing at or above grade level. The yellow represents students performing one grade level below, and the red represents students who are performing two or more grade levels below. And as you can see visually from the chart, we have increased our percentage of students performing at or above grade level by 10% from the fall. So that is in three months of instruction, from 31% all the way up to 41%. And we've shrunk the students performing one, two, three, and beyond grade levels, which is a huge accomplishment for our students and for our teachers. You can also see on the right-hand side that iReady assesses six different domains: phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary and literature comprehension, and informational comprehension. And you can see the larger bar is our winter scores, and our smaller bar underneath each domain is the fall score. So you can see we increased the students performing at or above grade level in all domains. Next slide, please. So this is another chart, just comparing the fall and winter scores. So as you can see, again, we're really proud of all our hard work, of our students just moving, shifting the green to the whole chart. We won't be satisfied until our whole chart is green, but this is good improvement for three months. Next slide, please. Additionally, iReady assesses what they call typical progress towards annual, annual progress towards typical growth. So by the end of the year, on that left-hand side, we would like, as a district, to be at 100%. Therefore, in the middle of the year, and really even since we're assessing the students a little bit before the middle of the year, we expect, as a district, to be between 40 and 50%. So the fact that we're already at 56% is another huge point of celebration. Next slide. And this is, again, just a comparison between the fall and winter scores by grade level. You will not see nine through 12 because they take the iXL for reading, actually, and they took their fall assessment in October, so they'll be taking it in the coming weeks to space it out a bit more. But this is by grade level, so you can see we increased students performing at or above in all grades. And I'll let my partner come next.
Yeah, I think, I only have two. Oh, that's your next steps.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Yeah.
The slides will be posted, so everyone can check those out. So this is kind of the same setup for math. You see the fall and the winter. It breaks it down by grade level, percent of students who are on or above, percent of students who are below, and then far below. The only difference here with iXL and iReady, if it's far below, it's more than one grade level, and we don't really have extra distinction, two or three. And so as the grade levels get up, you know, get higher, that could be anything. Like, if you're eighth grade, it could be sixth grade, it could be second grade. And so to kind of move that needle becomes even more difficult because we don't know exactly how far below they are. So we have decreased the students far below by about 1.7%, and we've also increased students on or above grade level by slightly more than two. I do want to note, we're up about 9% since fall of 2021, which I think, you know, that's almost 400 kids. That's a pretty big deal. So, you know, we're doing, we're doing some great work, and we're really moving those middle school students, which, in the first year of a new curriculum, I think that's something that they should be celebrated. That gap is closing. We have fewer students far below grade level at this point. And then there's some next steps for us as well. We've got some middle school PD coming up that I think, actually tomorrow, to train some additional teachers on the open-up resources that I think is going to continue to move the needle for us as well.
So thank you. And they are also making sure that implementation of the curriculum is there, with room for extensions for the students who are above grade level, and also interventions for the students who are below grade level. So we want to make sure every single student has access to high curriculum and also access to whatever they are in terms of the standards, and we teach grade-level standards in every single class. We are going to have next the AEAP working team, so if you can, please come and present your findings. That would be great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pam Staszewski, and I just wanted to make also a comment clarification. My two colleagues, when you're looking at the data and you're seeing numbers, and you, even if you see the number of green students being the same as fall and winter, the target for the fall is going, or the target for the winter is going to be higher than the target for the fall. So even if you are seeing the same percentages, it does mean that there is growth. The analogy I like to use is the Boston Marathon, which we are all familiar with. If you're running the Boston Marathon and you're keeping pace with your peers, you're doing pretty well. So even if you're in the yellow and you are still in the yellow, that is saying you're keeping pace with your peers. When those numbers from yellow go to green, larger numbers of those, that means we're pulling ahead. And so that's something important to think about because sometimes we tend to think if the numbers stay the same, that it's a negative connotation, and it is not.
Thank you. And actually, Pam is our new data analyst with many years of experience and holding a doctorate also in that field, so thank you for joining us.
Okay, good evening. I'm Larissa Doherty, the Assistant Superintendent for Diversity Equity Engagement. I'm just going to take us backwards before we go forward, just to remind everyone where we got to prior to our working group being established. So many of you will recall that immediately prior to COVID, there was a pre-AEAP at the Linden, which was for first and second grade, and then there were grades three through eight, which was more of an official program, which was also on the transcript. Then there was a COVID pause for new applications. Then this past year, on April 27, the school subcommittee voted to dismantle the program, but on May 2, the school committee voted to pause enrollment, and we were established for this working group. So we developed an application system for available seats in grades four through eight. Then this working group in the spring, and just, we met as early as last Wednesday, to review current practices, previous practices, data analysis, impact from multiple perspectives. And today, we are presenting the findings. So again, the year, the years that the program was paused was 2021, 20 to 2021, 2021 to 2022, 2022 to 2023. There was no third grade, but we continued, sort of backfilling the seats with a new application process. And the number of seats that were available for this year are up there on this slide.
Next. I'm going to introduce Erica Burian, who is the AEAP coordinator, to take us through the next steps.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, Erica.
So here, we can see the slide that where the Linden students who were previously accepted, applications will be automatically enrolled. The Linden students who are officially enrolled in the program with, were grandfathered in, no professional seedings, no preferred seedings in the program. For siblings, each student will be, will need to meet the criteria for entry. Students will participate in the all DESI district and school assessments. Transportation is not available. Students officially enrolled in the program must keep with the academic criteria and the exit program criteria. Students academically eligible will be reviewed in the middle and the end of school year. If the students do not maintain everything that's persisted, then they will be asked to exit the program. Next, please. Applications forms were available on Monday, May 9, at the Welcome Center. Applications were available in different languages. The application deadline was June 15, 2022. All applications were reviewed by the Welcome Center. Submissions of the application form did not guarantee the seating of the child. The Welcome Center notified all the applicants in their status by July 15, 2022. The students enrolled in the AEAP completely assessed before the June 21, 2022, in order for the MPS to gather baseline data to the form. Students enrolled in the AEAP did not need to apply if they were approved applications on the file. And then the MCAS data during COVID-19 was not used due to reliable scores.
Thank you.
And that is me. And then applicant forms had to be completed and submitted to the Welcome Center by June 15. All caregivers had to make an appointment with me, but on that, every time when the, when they did the assessments, all the students actually had a set date so that all the, we didn't have to make an appointment for that. The caregivers had, the students completed the following assessments for all applications considered in the ILX, math, iReady, literacy, writing, sample science, social studies. Assessments, caregivers submitted the following letters of recommendation and sales development, administrators' recommendations, applications, and teachers' guides, counselors, or school adjustment counselors' recommendations.
So I think that you can see these slides, this is just going back into history, so you can see the curriculum. This is going- This is going to be posted. They were, they're using, everybody's using Amplify KCL, and that is in every single grade level, and we are looking for fidelity in the implementation. And there's also opportunities for extension in every single curriculum, including open resources. And we have Emily Spainia, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, just to let us know how things are going with the curriculum implementation.
Well, I mean, thank you. You just went over the fact that the AEAP program is using the same curriculum that we're using in all of our other schools. And so you just went down the list, and it's there for you to see. And so there is no different curriculum that is being used in the program.
Go straight to a different slide because of time. So if you can go back to, to the district assessment analysis of the AEAP program, that would be great. Does she have a slide number, which is interesting?
So everyone, this is all foundational. This will be on the website tomorrow. What we're going to look at now is...
Good evening. I'm going to just run through very quickly some of the data that I have pulled over the last few weeks on students in the AEAP program. As you can see right here, these are actually students across the district that are above grade level in both math and reading. You can see how many of them are AEAP students and how many of them are not in AEAP program. And you're going to see in a moment where they are attending school. You can also see that we do have some students that may not be above grade level in both reading and math, but they are above grade level in one particular area. As you can see, the stronger area tends to be in the math. And here you can see side-by-side comparisons of students. And again, you see Malden students. So these are Malden students out of the 6,000-plus students we have. These are the numbers, not percentages, numbers of students who are reading above grade level in the fall on the left and in the winter on the right as measured by iReady. Next slide. You can see how many of those students are actually in the AEAP program versus those that are not. So you can see some of our students who are performing above grade level are not participating in the AEAP program at this time. Next slide. Now we are looking where are they located? And as you can see, they're spread out across all of our schools. They are not clustered in any particular school. Again, on the left is the fall data, and on the right is the winter data. Now, the, the piece that I wanted to look at was, as we've talked about, how many students are above grade level? How far above grade level are they? And so we actually looked at the data and looked at scores to see how many are one grade level above, two grade levels, three grade levels, or if they were four or five or however many grade levels. And you can see the vast majority, for the most part, were one year, functioning one year above grade level. Next slide. Now we're going to be looking at some of the math data. And again, same pattern of on the left is our fall data and on the right is our winter data. And these again are Malden students, numbers of Malden students above grade level in math. You can see how many of them are above grade level, meaning a full grade level above. A sixth grader performing at a seventh grade level. The midpoint of a grade is students that say in sixth grade in September are performing as a sixth grader in January. So they're about four to five months ahead. Here's similar results. It's now broken down by school. So as, again, as we saw in reading, the students are scattered across our schools. And again, how far above grade level are they in math? And on the left, again, we have our fall data, and then we have our winter data. The vast majority of our students who are functioning above grade level are functioning one year above grade level. But we do have a handful of students that are functioning either two, three, or more years above grade level. You can also see here where are the students that are attending the AEAP program and students that are not. And as you can see, that several of the students, while they are above grade level, are not in the AEAP program, and some of them are. Next slide. Here we're talking about growth. And again, if we think about the Boston Marathon analogy, we're keeping pace in the Boston Marathon. At the point where we were giving our assessment, we would expect a median growth of about 45%. That means a student is moving at the rate that they should to make annual growth. The idea is that all students would make annual growth. Of course, some students that are not performing at grade level, we would want to possibly be making more than annual growth. So, excuse me. So you can see in, in a lot of cases, we do have numbers that are below, or I'm sorry, above the 45%, not only for our AEAP program participants, but also across the district as a whole. The iXL results, the way the product presents the data and the growth data is a more just straightforward way of calculating. The one thing about the iReady data, and that's why the results look different in how they're presented, because the iReady data has a very complex way it's calculating the growth. They're taking that child and saying, if you are in fourth grade in September, we're going to compare you against other fourth graders who started the year in the same place you did. So if you've got a fourth grader that's functioning at a sixth grade level, it's going to give them a target that is typical of a fourth grader in September that's functioning at a sixth grade level nationally. It's going to give them that target, just like going to the pediatrician. You've got norms when your baby is born, what is a growth trajectory that would be expected? That's very similar. iXL has a much more straightforward just calculation. They don't do that adjustment for where the student is in comparison to their peers. Their scores are strictly on a 500, 600, 700. And so what we would be looking at, again, since we're not quite halfway through the year, you would expect to see or want to see a growth of 40 points. And as you can see, in a lot of cases, whether we're talking about the AEAP program or students in general, that we have a lot of places where students are meeting that threshold of 40, which means basically they're on track to make annual growth. We also looked at MCAS results. And so we were just looking for students that were scoring in the exceeding category, which is the highest category on the assessment. And we were looking at the number of students that were exceeding in both ELA and math. And here you can see the numbers of, of students. And again, these are Malden students. This is across our entire district of 6,000 and some students. Obviously, we don't have 6,000 students taking MCAS because you don't start taking MCAS until you're in third grade, and you only typically take it one year in high school. And here's the students that met that criteria on the, on the previous slide and which students are in AEAP program and which students are in one of our other schools or at Linden, not in the AEAP program. And as you can see, they, again, the pattern is they are scattered across all of our schools. They are not clustered in any one school. Students that are above grade level that are, I'm sorry, they're exceeding the standards for both ELA and math for spring 2020.
Thank you, Pam. So I just want to remind everybody about the requirements for the program. And it is that students must score in all assessments, in all subjects, and no lower than grade level. And that will be in the mid-year and end of the year. We haven't done the assessments yet for history and science, so we had to wait for those scores. And number six is the students who score lower than grade level. The benchmarks in at least one of the subjects will be required to exit the program. We are not there yet, so we will do more studies. So if you can actually, the last slide, can you just put it there? Thank you. This is a summary of all the data. We do have the enrollment. The, the numbers in parentheses are actually the district numbers, and the numbers within, out of parentheses are the students enrolled in the AEAP program. So we can see the students that score above grade level in math, in ELA, and then in both ELA and math. So you can see the results. And I don't know if you can move the graph a little bit lower. So we can see that in both subjects, we have in grade one, grade four, only one student. Grade five, we have only six. In grade six, we have six. In grade seven, we have one. In grade eight, we have two. And the expectation will be that all the students enrolled in our programs will be scoring above grade level in both ELA and math, science and history. We know that that's challenging, it's not a reality, and here, we are here for the students about putting at that criteria is very challenging for them. We are not ready to make a recommendation because we will be waiting for the history and science assessments. And also because we can see that the implementation of our new curriculum is making a difference in our students' lives, especially because we have extensions in every curriculum. That means if you are above grade level, teachers can tap into the extensions. And if you are lower, below grade level, there are also support systems in there. We are using the WIM block in different schools to provide services and support, including some of the students that are in the AEAP program. Because at the end of the day, this is not about a specific program. This is about students getting what they need in order to be successful and to move forward. We do have amazing teachers across the district. We have identified some classrooms that are going to serve as laboratory classrooms where all the teachers can go and see best practices. And that is how you differentiate instruction within the classrooms. And in order to make sure that all these students, if they're great at math, we will continue pushing that math. But if you're struggling math, we will be able to support you to make sure they are going to be a grade level and above grade level. We know that we are teaching at grade level standards. So if a student is fourth grade but reading in, at grade level two, we are not going to lower the standards to grade level two, because that means we are going to create a greater gap in grade level. So what we are doing is teaching grade level standards and filling the gaps. That means providing them with support because the concepts, the students who are in fourth grade don't think the same way as a second grader. So it will be a disgrace to have students in fourth grade learning second grade material. The concept is fourth grade materials, is just providing them with the extra support that they need in order to be able to read at grade level and to make sure that we see growth in every single area. So therefore, that is where the district is going to continue with this new amazing curriculum. We have extension, we have a group of teachers working, and somebody asked, one of the parents, yes, about the honors program, because every single student deserves to have the best education in the classroom that they are at and to belong and to stay in their schools. So therefore, I am not going to make a recommendation at all. I just have to say that every single student in the Malden public schools deserve the best education in the classrooms because we have amazing educators across the district. And they are in every single grade school from pre-K to 12. And I'm very proud to see some of the gains in here. We have a long way to go. We're still in recovery period, just to, as a reminder. We are not there yet, and we still, and we are seeing some growth. We have an amazing curriculum, professional development. And next year, hopefully, we will be able to adopt other things such as a project-based learning. But at this moment, teachers are adopting two different curriculums. We want to give them time to get their feet wet, to get used to it, and then we will move the needle a little bit more forward for the other students. Once again, the belief is that every single student deserves the best education in every single classroom at homeschool. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Questions of our superintendent? And again, for the people that are here or watching us online, this presentation will be posted...
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. All right, let's first go to Mr. Gray.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just need immediately, as far as right now, one small clarification concerning these bar charts, many of these bar charts. Is it set up so that it's comparing one Linden classroom per grade level versus the totals of the entire district across the entire city?
So we have at Linden only one class per AEAP?
Yes, yes.
So then it comes with the district? Yes, it compares other classes in the district.
Recording in progress.
So if you have, it's fourth graders across the district with one fourth grade from AEAP?
Okay, I, I just wanted to make that clear because it wasn't really pointed out during the presentation. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Over to Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try to keep this brief as possible. Just going back to the beginning of your presentation, we were talking about Lunar New Year coming up. Can you just clarify how we handle absences for holidays in which our students, where the district isn't closed, in regards to them being excused absences? Because I know like if a student goes to say the doctors, they have a doctor's note that says, you know, student was sick, can't come to school, excused absence. How do we handle holidays in which the district is not closed?
Okay, so we don't, we cannot excuse vacations. That's a DESI site. And if students miss 10 days out of the school, we have to report them as withdrawn. But we work with the families too, knowing that if they're going to be out. The excuse absent allows parents to get the work from the teacher. When it's not a excuse, teachers don't have to give the work to the students. And once again, vacations, we don't have the luxury, I would say, of excusing vacation for students. So they can take it as, they can notify the school, but at the same time, we have to report 10 consecutive absences. We have gone to 15 historically. We do have to discharge. And the families are aware of that. I have to say the principals do a very good job communicating with families. In terms of if the student is sick and they don't take them to the doctors, because right now getting an appointment is almost impossible, is that they can call the nurses. And there was a voicemail that I sent about absences that if your child is sick, just call the nurses. Because we know that things are happening, and sometimes you cannot take, it's not COVID-related, it's just that the students are sick. So we will excuse those.
Okay. I, I think, I'm not looking at this as being a vacation, though. Like if, if a student is celebrating a holiday, that's like a religious holiday to them, that's not a vacation. I, I just think that we're doing a disservice to our students that are unable to come to school due to a, say, a religious holiday. And I'm not talking about vacations to Disney World or to visit Aunt So-and-so that lives in West Palm Beach. So I, I don't know if we can maybe take this offline and potentially send it to policy to be looked at?
So every student has to have X amount of hours in school. And the days off or holidays or vacation or anything, that is in the calendar. We have to follow those. So we'd be actually coming back to policy and making sure that all the students will meet the time on learning.
Yeah, I, I think we should take it offline because I think, again, if, if a student can get work sent home for an excused absence... get work sent home for an excused absence, let's take this offline.
Sure.
The rest of my questions revolve around sped, so I don't know if Pam Mc. Because you know I love this. This is my, so question in regards to the RISE program and the PACE program, because RISE is behavioral.
Well, we call it therapeutic.
Emotional disability, yep. But yes. But I also think that a lot of students that could possibly be in the PACE program with like an ASD diagnosis could straddle. Do you have students that start in one program and may get moved to the other or vice versa?
I mean, I think a lot of students could fit into different categories. The PACE is really for students that are going to be with us till they're 22, so that they need, they're not going to pass the MCAS, they're probably not going to get a traditional diploma, and they're on track to be with us till they're 22. And it's more of a life skills program than the RISE program is. Does that make sense?
It doesn't, it doesn't. But I know there are, you know, each student is different, so.
So the PACE is a much lower functioning.
Through it in a personal lens. But I definitely see how you're explaining that. I do understand. And then, again, the difference between PACE and ILP, because both said they service students with an ASD diagnosis, but what is the difference between those programs?
So mostly, there is, mostly the ASD students are in the ILP program. We do have a few that, for whatever reason, end up in the PACE program. And that's why when they get to the high school, it's really just one program. I think at the younger levels, it is really, the ILP programs do a lot more of ABA services than the PACE program. It is much more of a, the ILP really works on, you know, your applied behavior, they're running trials. That's, the ILP is much more strictly autism, where the PACE is much more of a functional academic and not as sort of behavioral, not even behavioral, but ABA-based, ABA-based.
Okay. And then, my final question was just doing quick math up here. Our current enrollment district-wide is 6435, with 1397 of our student population being on IEPs.
Okay.
That's 21% of our student population. That's a huge chunk of our students.
Is that what we have right now for, from which slide?
So, well, I compared two slides. So I took our district enrollment slide.
Correct.
Of 6,435. And then your slide.
Thirty-one. So that was, the difference is, is the point in time, that was, those numbers were taken from last October 1, I believe.
Which is only three months ago.
Yes, so, but as of October.
So realistically, I'm just saying, 21% of our student population, a fifth of our student population is on IEPs. That's a huge chunk.
It is. And that's pretty much in the ballpark of the state average, I think. There were a little, like 18.
So that was going to be my question, what is the state average?
Yep.
I don't know if, I didn't see a slide unless I missed it, because you threw a lot of data at us.
There is a slide that has at the bottom of the state averages, yes.
Okay.
Our numbers, I mean, I will say our numbers have gone up this year for IEPs. But again, I think that is a function of us coming back from a pandemic where we have students who may have fallen a little more, who may in years past not have been picked up for an IEP. We do see our numbers of students with SLD rising a little bit, specific learning disability, where in the past they may not have fallen behind with good instruction. I think our reading numbers, our students with disabilities for reading have rose a little, which, you know, when you look at students, a third of your students will read no matter what you do, a third need good instruction, and a third will need intervention no matter what you do. That middle third, where we had so many of our children not learning via Zoom, that middle third has gotten a little murky, and I think it's kind of gone. Some of those kids is where we see the pickup.
Okay, and that was my question, and kind of where I was leading with was in regards to assessments.
Yep.
Obviously, there's been a rise in assessments as we've come back into school. But when we assess, we can't diagnose, correct?
No, and we don't diagnose, but we do say, you know, that educationally, they require these services to make progress and have access.
Okay. I think I need to take the rest of my questions offline for you, because I think they're way above, because I'd love to talk more about like the low-income numbers and maybe inability to get like evaluations due to lack in health insurance, so all of that.
Low income, is it, you know, are they, why are they struggling in our schools? What is it that they're missing?
So, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to hold up anybody else's. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batafor. Now to Ms. Rose Iberg, and then over to Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is more just a comment. I want to just say, as the school committee rep for the working group on AEP, I do want to thank folks for speaking up on this topic. And please, Mr. Slavat, if you want to send me those questions, so that I can, you know, work them into our future meetings and things like that, is basically going to say, just I remain committed to working on this. And I hope people do take a little look at the data that we have so far and know that it's a starting point and that we're going to keep working on this. But again, just to reach out that if people do have any additional questions or things like that, I am welcoming anybody to give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose Iberg. Over to Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, I think, I hate to pull you up again, Pam, but I'm going to. You had mentioned that, you had mentioned that there was a flux of students that are kind of coming in and out of district. Do we have an average number on that?
No, I think that the number stays the same. I think what it is is that there are certain students, I think that we're about 70, 70 to 72. But what will happen, like for instance, like I said, we have a student that is placed in a group home here or in Everett or someplace close, and we, and they're in Shore Collaborative or something like that. If they get moved, like we do have a student currently that's been moved to the other side of the state, we can no longer bus him back. And we'll be, we have to send out packets, we have to find a placement. And it could be six weeks where they're being tutored and Clinton Public Schools is servicing them until, so during that time, they kind of will switch to a, the holding school while we wait for the placement. So that's why sometimes from month to month, they seem to fluctuate. But we do, we do hold steady, we have held steady this year at around 70-ish, a little over 70.
Okay, that's all the questions I think I've got for you. I do have one comment, I think, that I'd seen on the AEP that there was a little, that I noticed, that in the rest of our numbers for the rest of the school systems, around grade seven, we kind of see this weird little drop, which is concerning. In Linden, it looked like it kind of went in for a little bit earlier, grade six. I don't know if there's something to be done about that, and maybe it's something we take offline, but I just wanted to go and get that in kind of in the record, that that looked to me a little concerning, because it's in that same kind of age area and something that maybe we need to go and take a look at and see, you know, if that's a hole that we need to go and fill.
Thank you.
That's all I. Thank you very much, Mr. Bernard. So now we'll go to Mr. Wilday, then back to Mr. Gray, and then if there be no objection, we'll move forward with the rest of the agenda. Mr. Wilday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two or three quick things. One, for the superintendent, jumping back to the human resources and licensure support. I appreciate the breakdown. I think it's, it's really good to see this laid out so early. And for the folks who are out in the audience, folks who are watching, because I think this is one of the key issues that we had last year with non-renewals was around licensure. And I think these numbers jump out at me, particularly the 48 staff with expiring licenses. So I, I hope, and I think you've already been on board, that, you know, HR has communicated this with those staff members, with the MEA, so that no one can say that we did not know that we have these specific licensure issues. This is a large number. And I think that's noticeable. I don't think it's something that we, it's exclusive to us. I have a lot of staff in my building with emergency licenses, with waivers, so I know that's something that we have to deal with on a year-to-year basis. But this is still a large number, so I appreciate seeing it in January, knowing that we've got a little time to work on it. My only questions are actually for Pam.
Just stand there, Pam.
Here all night.
Just stay there.
Hey, Pam, real, real, real quick. One, just out of pure curiosity, when I'm looking at the special ed comparison data, the difference between partial inclusion and sub-separate, fully sub-separate. So if I'm a student in the ILP program at Forestale, I go to art, music, gym with a gen ed classroom or an inclusion classroom, does that mean that I'm still sub-separate or am I partial?
You would most likely be sub-separate. It has to do with the minutes. It's, the cutoff is 60% or more in grid C, sub-separate, is full inclusion. I mean, sorry, sub-separate. Partial is 40 to 20.
60% of their, okay, so if I'm, so if I'm a kid in ILP, I was going to expound on that, but so like if I'm a kid in ILP and I go to like art and let's say I go to like math or I go to science.
Then you'd probably be partial inclusion.
Cool. Oh, it's really nuanced. Okay, all right, yeah, just, thank you.
And our IEP online program calculates the minutes out for us, so that we don't make math mistakes on it.
So really, by moving, if, if the, if the students are there, if the students are ready for it.
Correct.
By moving kids, I know, because it's, yeah.
I know where you're going, and you're right.
So like when we're moving kids from the ILP classroom, not necessarily moving them into a gen ed classroom, but bringing them into a gen ed classroom or an inclusion classroom for particular subject areas, we're moving our numbers sort of from the sub-separate to partial inclusion, which is the ultimate goal. All right, that's really interesting.
And I think, you know, people ask why you want that. Anytime a student is outside of the gen ed, they're, they're not getting the same rigor, the same exposure, no matter how hard we try. And we want to make sure that we give everyone that opportunity.
No, I completely agree. And I think the work that's been done, I saw it firsthand at Forestale, and I know it's happening in other places, to sort of include students in the sub-separate in a lot of gen ed and inclusion spaces is really commendable. My only other two questions. One, around the MCAS alt, because you mentioned that, and this is going to sound facetious, but it's not, that Desi wants us to get to 1%. Are they doing anything to help us? Or is it just get to 1%?
No, I get a yelling at letter, but then I have to respond to them and tell them what we're doing to move off of the 1%.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
That's due at the end of the month, so.
Oh, okay. Great, thanks, Desi. And, oh, my only other question was, in terms of the tuitioning in, I did not know that that was happening, and that's really exciting, because I think that we had been talking for many years about potentially being able to tuition students. I mean, people, people come to Malden, and you, you mentioned this, like people come to Malden for our special education services.
Correct.
We've got stories from years past, people who would move here from other countries to sort of access our services.
Correct.
So I think that knowing that we can do this now is awesome. Is this something that you're looking to expand on? And what sort of capacity do we need to build to do that? Because I think hearing that that's happening and that can happen here, that's very great, and you should be applauded for that.
So when I, when I was in Haverhill, quite frankly, I, we tuitioned in to a number of programs, and it really just helps you subsidize your programs. It's a, and if you build it, they will come. If you invest in your programs, then you can help other communities. We, there was, what was nice in Haverhill though, is that we did have a sub-separate day program. And if you look at the communities on that sheet that have very, have lower percentages of out of district, it's because they do have those sub-separate day programs. In Haverhill, I was very lucky to have a therapeutic sub-separate day, like the Medfords, Curtis School. And then we also had a sub-separate day student, a day program for students with autism. And that was, it was a godsend on, on many ways, and it also brought in neighboring communities. So, you know, that's, that's a long way off, and it's, it's very difficult to build. We opened them while I was there. It will take a lot of work. Coming out of a pandemic, it's going to, that's a few years out, I would say. But, you know, building, rebuilding our autism programs as well as, you know, rebuilding the RISE program, especially having it at the high school is the first step. The next step really is, is looking at that language-based program, because there's not a lot of communities around here that have it. So that will be our next step.
That's a big one. I mean, even hearing though how you parsed out, and, and I think it's good for all of us and folks at home to hear, how you parsed out sort of the difference between the RISE and the pathways, which oftentimes get conflated with each other. I think that was important, and I think those are, you say, if you build it, they will come. We've been trying to build it for like a decade, so it's got to take, I think the builder and the leadership really needs to take some credit. And I know you don't do that in a vacuum. I know you have a lot of leaders here who support, who support the work of our special education department, but like, that's a really cool milestone to see happen. And, you know, I think it's only going to get better from here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilday. Over to Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have one last quick question for the superintendent. Do we have an approximate timeline for when the next AEP data will be presented? That's, that's about it, yes.
So on our next meeting in February, we will have all the data, and then we'll make a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. And just from the chair, I want to highlight something in Mr. Frekka's district newsletter that really impressed me. And I think the student representative and all her classmates should be really proud as well as the high school principal, Chris Mistrangelo, because the 700 students who made the honor roll in the first quarter, is it me or is that really an exceptional number of students? I don't know if you could comment on that? That seemed to me to be more than in years past. And I was just curious, Mr. Mistrangelo, what your, if you could give us some insight on that.
That's exceptional.
Yep, yep.
Is that?
I think it's a lot of hard work. I mean, coming two years off a pandemic.
Right.
Really looking at the work that not just the students are doing, but the support we're getting from the caregivers at home. And, you know, we have an amazing staff at Malden High School.
And is that?
Deeply about our kids.
Pre-pandemic, that's, that's a high number.
We never really had a formal honor roll at the high school. In my time, in the 14 year, maybe Adam, when you were there, it was different. We never really had a formal one. Something we looked into, talked about with Superintendent Oregas. So we established the criteria, and then, you know, did what we do, and then ran the numbers. And when we ran it, I'm not going to lie, we ran it a couple times, because we were blown away by the number.
Right.
And, you know, high honors is 90 or above and passing in all classes, and honors is 80 above, passing in all past field classes. So that's an exceptional number. And again, I think it really points to the work that the students are doing. But I think, you know, it really works, it points to the work that our faculty is doing at the high school. And not just our content area teachers, but our elective teachers and the support staff, such as the guidance department, the house principals, the social workers, our parent educators, everybody's working really hard. And we're two years, two-plus years off a pandemic, and I think it's really something, I'm very proud, very proud of the work that everybody's done together to support that. So yeah, it's an exceptional number.
Yeah, I was quite impressed, you know, when you read them, and then it said go to page three, and then you read them and you go to page five. I mean, it was, congratulations to everyone on that.
Yep, well done for the staff and students. Thank you.
All right, everyone. So now we're going to go to superintendent's evaluation, Ms. Macklin. There you go. Let me, let me press it. There you go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I think I brought this up in October. We were looking for some closure with the superintendent's evaluation that we submitted in July. I know that the chair of that subcommittee made his presentation in September. However, we've not had a vote. We've not had accurate scoring or rating of the evaluation. And so I did briefly speak with Rob over the weekend, and so I know that the subcommittee has not met. I just, I'm happy to table it this evening, but I need to know where, where we're going moving forward.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so it.
Yeah, so it basically comes down to scheduling conflicts with myself, Ms. Seiberg and Ms. Patafora. You know, schedules haven't lined up. A lot of different things have happened, so, yeah, so I think the best thing right now is to, is to table this pending a review from the evaluation subcommittee. So all three of us can review the information and bring it back to the, the table, to the full body.
I know there's no such thing as guarantees, but can you guarantee?
Yeah.
February this will?
Yeah.
Does that work for everyone? Ms. Hold on, we're just checking on a technical issue. Is everybody clear on that? Any questions? Did you wanna, Ms. Patafora, did you wanna say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect, Mr. McCarthy, this is not a scheduling issue, because I have heard from you once. So I, I will expect this to be scheduled, but without the blame to be put on your subcommittee members.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Do we need a motion table?
No.
I don't think so. It's been tabled, right? Yeah. All right. There you have it. So February. Now we're at points of personal privilege. It's an opportunity for members to give us updates as to what's happening around the district from the advantage point. Any points of personal privilege before we entertain a motion to go into executive session? Ms. Patafora?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a few reminders, I think it's already been discussed, that January 16th, there'll be no school as we will be observing Martin Luther King Jr. Day. On the 18th of January, there'll be a Title I Zumba event at BB. I believe it's at 6:00 PM. But I will put that information out on what? 6:00 PM, thank you. As well as an early dismissal on January 20th at 11:00 AM. And then the BB School Site Council will be meeting on the 25th of January at 5:00 PM. I'd also just like to, oh, I had something else, but I don't have the date in front of me. The city and maybe the mayor will help me out on this one, is hosting a session in regards to the uptick of coyotes.
Yes.
In Malden. And I know with many of our students that walk to school, that is really informative for parents on how students, I believe it's the 26th?
Yes, Thursday, January 26th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM here in the chamber. And reading that it'll be in partnership with Mass Wildlife and it will be in a hybrid format, so people can watch it from home and ask questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's just super important to the students that, you know, are taking buses or walking to school just to, to know what they're, how to react.
Yeah, if you have any questions ahead of time, our animal control officer, Kevin Alkins, is coordinating that effort.
Thank you, thank you. And just lastly, I know the superintendent touched upon postings, open postings, but I just want to reiterate, I try to share this on my page monthly, that if you know anybody looking to be an educator in Malden, it is maldenps.tedk12.com. So please send, send your friends to come work here. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to Ms. Macklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank the community and everyone. As you know, we, we had Mary Malden our third year for December, for the holiday season. And this year, we were able to match 215 wish lists with local sponsors. We shopped for an additional 130 wish lists from donated funds from the community and sponsors. And I'd like to give a big shout out to Counselor Amanda Linehan, who co-founded Mary Malden with me. Volunteers Ari Taylor, Zeta Ortiz, Jessica Vasquez, Amanda Bellis, and so many of you here that participated. I know Victoria was so excited to get her, her wish list. The chair, Adam has helped out, Sharon has helped out for many years and many of you have also, we, we don't just shop and buy the gifts, we also deliver them. So we've had many volunteer to become delivery drivers and it's, it's just an awesome, awesome experience. So I, I thank all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Macklin. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For once, I'm going to be completely and totally selfish and this is going to be all about me. I want to thank Principal Mastrangelo. Yeah, it's all about me for the incredible job he's doing, incredible job he's done, because my son is on that honor roll list. I, I can't hold it back. I feel it. I'm so proud of what our Malden teachers are doing and have done. And it, it's meaningful to me in that, over the two years of COVID, I had concerns about my son. We were locked in, we were locked at home, we were shut in. And I'm one of those parents who it's affected personally and I had concerns, how is he gonna integrate back into society, into the school system, once they opened up? And whatever it is Mastrangelo's doing in that high school, it's working for my son. And there, there are no poetic words. I'm, I'm not an orator. I feel it. Thank you, Chris. Like I said, it's all about me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, and congratulations. We're now going to end with one other note. Did you have anything, Mr. Wilday?
Real quickly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to urge everybody who's watching at home, even if they'll be able to watch the recording, but to tune into our, our next meeting in February, on February 6th. I cannot understate how great it will be to have representatives from our legislature. We have Senator Jason Lewis, who's the chair of our education committee, come, or the Senate Education Committee, coming to talk to us about Chapter 70. And we've talked a lot, I think, as a committee and as a community about this funding formula and what this means for Malden. But I think now is a great time for us to really be coming together as a community to figure out how we can do something about it. And I think it's particularly poignant, because we just inaugurated a new governor and lieutenant governor within the past week. And part of the reason why I personally am really excited about that is for folks who don't know, our new lieutenant governor was the mayor of Salem, Kim Driscoll, who has come to Malden many times and was here talking about Chapter 70, I don't know, six, seven years ago on a panel at the Jenkins and who has already been engaging with us in conversations about, you know, the challenges that we as an urban district are facing. So this is, this is the time. And I think making sure that we pay attention, get all of our information and know how to move forward, I think, together will be, it'll pay off in the long run for not just Malden, but I think communities like Malden around the state. So I appreciate the opportunity to have that conversation on February 6th. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wilday. And if I might, just from the chair, I would like to announce that the city will be hosting a Martin Luther King Jr. Event right here at City Hall on Monday, January 16th, beginning at 10:00 AM. The way we have it set up is 9:00 AM will be coffee, pastries, milling about, and then the formal program will begin at 10:00 AM, which we expect to last for about an hour and an hour and a half. Now you may be wondering, doesn't the North Shore Black Women's Association typically have this event for our community? And they do. But this year, they couldn't make it happen in time. And the effect that they've had on us over the years immediately prompted us to come together to have an event in lieu of them not being able to have theirs. So I do want to publicly thank Craig Spatafora, Neil Anderson, Maria Luis, our team, Kathleen Manning Hall, Ron Carquin, who have been meeting furiously over the past 10 days to, to pull this together. And I do want to go back to the theme, will be about service. We intend to recognize several of our service organizations, those that have gone above and beyond. And, and that's why it's a perfect segue back to Dawn Macklin. If you notice, not looking for any recognition on, on her end, we're gonna give it to her on Monday, because this is something that she's been doing over the past several years with, you know, not looking for anything except, you know, us to help our kids. So we hope you can all join us. Again, it will be next Monday, January 16th at 10:00 AM here in the chamber. And we also are working to stream it live. So for those that can't attend, we, we are hoping to show it as it's happening, so people can view it from anywhere they are. All right, we'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Bernard.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Patafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilday?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Seiberg? May I ask something?
Yes. It will now be in executive session. It will now be in executive session.
...
Recording in progress.
School committee is back. We'll entertain any motions of the members. Motion by Ms. Padefora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we extend the attendance officer's contract, Mr. Parselin, until February 24th of 2023.
Second by Mr. Wilday. Any questions? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Padefora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yes.
Mayor Kelsonson?
Yes, that carries unanimously. Any other business? Motion by Mr. Drummy to adjourn, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. School committee is hereby adjourned.
...